This time we'll call the order of the September 3, 2025, special budget meeting of the City of Clearwater City Council. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd just like to quickly introduce our deities for tonight. To my far left is our deputy city clerk, Nicole Sprague.
Good evening.
To her right, city attorney David Margolis.
Good evening.
To his right, city council member Ryan Cotton.
Good evening.
To his right, city council member Michael Manino.
Good evening.
To my right, city council member David Alderton.
Hello.
To his right, vice mayor Lena Tacheta.
Good evening.
To her right, city manager Jennifer Poirier.
Good evening.
To her right, assistant city manager Dan Slaughter. And to his right, assistant city manager Alba. With that, we'll move to item 2.1 on the agenda.
Set final milage rate of 5.8850 mils for fiscal year 2025-26 against non-exempt real and personal property within the City of Clearwater and pass ordinance 9848-25 on first reading.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kailene Castle, Budget Director. This is the first of two public hearings required by Florida statute to finalize the fiscal year 25-26 operating and capital improvement budget. For the benefit of residents present or watching, I have a presentation which gives an overview of the budget you are approving. The fiscal year 25-26 proposed budget for all city funds is $710,298,440. Our operating funds and special revenue funds are $575,95,500 of this total, and capital improvement funds are budgeted at $135,202,940. In total, this is a decrease of 10% from the 24-25 amended total city budget. This slide further breaks out that operating portion of the last slide showing totals by fund type. The general fund budget for fiscal year 26 reflects a 4% decrease from the current year's amended budget. And I have a few slides that will go into further detail about revenues and expenditures of the general fund later in the presentation. The utility funds total includes the budget for operations and capital project funding of the water and sewer, stormwater, gas, and solid waste and recycling departments. Next year's budget in total has increased by $986,092, which is less than 1% from the current year. Enterprise fund total includes the budget for the operations and capital funding of the beach marina, airpark, Clearwater Harbor Marina, and parking system. These departments are budgeted at a 62% decrease from the current year, and this is because of a one-time spike in capital funding for parking projects in the current year. Internal service funds include the budget for the operations of information technology, utility customer service, building and maintenance, fleet and radio communications, and also the central insurance fund. The budget for internal service funds are decreased by $213,930. This is also less than 1% from the current fiscal year. Special revenue funds, these funds account for restricted revenue sources. They reflect a 34% decrease from prior year, and this is because of planned penny projects in the current year. And capital improvement funds reflect an 18% decrease from the current year, and I have a slide also later in this presentation that will give further detail on that total. This chart represents the change in taxable property values over the last 11 years. Our 2025 preliminary values received from the Pinellas County property appraiser reflect an increase in property values, taxable property values approximately 4.7% from $18.5 billion in 2024 to $19.3 billion. The proposed millage rate of 5.8850 mils is recommended for the fiscal year 25-26 budget. This is the same rate as was levied in the current year. Due to value growth, this proposed rate is 4.34% greater than the rollback rate, which is the rate that would provide the city with the same tax revenue as received in the prior Using the millage rate proposed, property tax revenues are projected to be $109.2 million in fiscal year 26. This represents an increase of approximately $4.9 million, or 5% over the current budget. Of that $109.2 million projected, approximately $104 million supports general fund operations, and $5.2 million represents the road millage that supports the maintenance of our city Revenues that support general fund operations reflect a net decrease of 4% in comparison to the current year. This decrease is primarily related to the use of reserves, which is budgeted in the current year, and that was budgeted for one-time capital projects. As discussed on the previous slide, ad valorem taxes are budgeted at approximately $104 million, which is a 5% increase. This represents approximately 47% of the total general fund revenues. The other revenue categories shown here, the remaining 53% are budgeted using a projection of receipts based on current trends where applicable, or transfers from other funds as defined in policy. General fund expenditures in total reflect a decrease of 4% across all operations in comparison to the current year. This proposed budget for next year includes annual wage adjustments in line with any approved labor contracts, costs associated with insurance increases, debt service costs for imagine bonds, capital funding for road maintenance and city facility improvement projects. Most departments show overall decreases, which is primarily due to the change in pension funding methods, which saved over $6 million in the general fund. In addition, departments were challenged to review operations for efficiency and budgetary savings. This review helped reduce the operating expenditures by $480,000 in the general fund. The budget for public safety is 44% of the total general fund budget, with the police department representing 27% of that total, and fire and EMS operations representing 17% of total. This chart represents the total general fund by category. Personnel costs continue to be our largest expense at 59% of total. This represents funding for 1,161.4 full-time equivalent positions that support general fund operations. Operating expenditures are the next largest category at approximately 15.5% of total. And the budget for inter-fund transfers is 14% of the total. This represents $15.2 million transferred to fund capital repair and replacement projects, $10.4 million for one-time major facility renovations and road construction projects, and $4.2 million of that total is transferred to the CRA, representing the city's TIF contribution for both CRAs. A total of 1,891.6 full-time equivalent positions are proposed across all funds for fiscal year 26. This is a decrease of 12.3 full-time equivalent positions from the current budget. In this graph, the sand-pillared portion represents general fund FTEs, which are a total of 1,161.4. This is a decrease of 12.3 from the current year. In comparison, the green portion represents all other funds. These are budgeted at 730.2 FTEs, and that is the same total as the current year. The total budget for capital improvement funds is $135.2 million for fiscal year 26. This slide represents the categorical breakdown of capital improvement funding. Funding of projects for utilities provide for planned capital maintenance, projects for stormwater, water sewer, gas, and the solid waste and recycling funds. For fiscal year 26, this is a total of $69.8 million, which is approximately 51.5% of that total. General government projects are budgeted at $39.4 million, which represents 29% of total capital funding, and this includes projects for police, fire, streets, sidewalks, parks and recreation facilities, libraries, and the maintenance of general city buildings. Projects in support of internal service operations are budgeted at $18.4 million, which is 13.5% of total. These projects fund the support fleet, radio communications, general services, information technology, and utility customer service. And the capital budget for small enterprise funds is proposed at $7.6 million for fiscal year 26. This provides funding for capital repair and maintenance projects at the airpark, both marinas, and parking facilities. So circling back to property values and millage rates, so I just want to take a quick moment to talk to you about the millage rate and how it affects the residents here. This is an example of city taxes on a homesteaded property. As a reminder, taxable value is the value after all exemptions. With homestead exemption, the Save Our Homes cap limits the increase in assessed value to the lesser of CPI or 3%. The Save Our Homes cap for this year is 2.9%. With this cap, the assessed values of homesteaded properties may see a 2.9% increase. On a 2024 taxable value of $100,000, this assumes growth of 2.9% for a new taxable value this year of $102,900. In this example, or for every $100,000 in taxable value, the city taxes would increase by $17.07. I've also listed an alternate scenario here, an alternate example. For a home with a taxable value of $250,000, total city taxes would be $1,471.25, which breaks down to about $4.03 a day. Trim notices were mailed to our residents a few weeks ago from the property appraiser. These notices show an estimate of total property taxes for the year based on all agencies' proposed millage rates. This slide represents the breakdown of the total tax bill for Clearwater residents. Approximately 33% of the tax bill supports the Pinellas County School Board. 28% is in support of Pinellas County government operations. The city's portion is 30% of that total, and 9% of total is collected to support all other taxing agencies. The proposed budget was made available, posted on the city's website, on June 30. This was presented to the public at the council meeting on July 10, where you approved the tentative millage rate. We held a special work session on August 6 to further discuss the budget as presented tonight. This is our first public hearing to adopt the budget. The second public hearing, I'm sorry, will be held to adopt the budget, formally adopt the budget. That's on Wednesday, September 17, also scheduled to begin at 6:00 PM. And this budget will go into effect on October 1. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to the agenda item 2.1? Okay, hearing none.
Do I have to fill out a card?
Yes, please.
I didn't realize a public comment was going to be available at this point. My name is Rudy Michalek. I live on Clearwater Beach. In looking at the budget, I guess I had a couple of questions with regards to personnel. So I don't expect necessarily an answer, but I'd just like to throw those questions out if I can. First, with regards to staffing, I noticed that there is a decrease actually in staffing. And I'm curious if that decrease is caused by unfilled positions now being removed from a budget, or if in fact we're actually removing people from the payroll of the city, and how will that affect services? I think the second question I had, which I have not had a chance to really study in depth, has to do with capital expenditures. We have a substantial number of multi-year programs that are listed out, North Beach, the roadway out here, the marina, and so forth. And I just want to receive some confirmation that in terms of positioning this budget for this year and into the future, is there enough capital monies available to maintain the pace we need to go at in order to conclude these various projects over the years? Because each year they get more expensive. Based upon what I see happening with the Fed and potential, quote, "interest rates" and tariffs and so forth, I project that there's going to be a substantial increase in costs going forward in future years. So I hope that that has all been figured into, you know, how we're placing this budget, tied together with future budget lines. The other thing that...I actually printed off some of the previous pages that I think were posted, and I had a little difficulty tying in what I saw here today with the certain pages here in terms of just the total, being able to look at the document. And this may actually be an old document that I had, so that might be the thing. So I guess my final question would be is, are these slides now available somewhere on the Clearwater website that I can now pull off to take a look at? And with that, I'll just say, thank you very much. I know budgeting is a very difficult process, especially when you also have to look multi-years ahead in order to identify what millage rates you have to set up for the different areas in order to meet a ongoing budget. And in particular, I'm concerned about the utility costs. Our condominium association's had a number of expenses this past year, specifically due to the hurricanes, and so I assume I'll be able to call somebody in the city to get an estimate of what the cost would be for utility and water. Thank you very much.
If anyone else here from the public desires to speak to the agenda item 2.1? Can we get a reading here, please?
This is ordinance number 9848-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, declaring the millage rate to be levied for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026. For operating purposes, including the funding of pensions, debt service, and road maintenance for capital improvement expenditures at 5.885 mils, providing an effective date, the levy of 5.885 mils constitutes a 4.34% increase from the rollback rate of 5.6402 mils.
Is there any council discussion on this? This is where we're voting twice, right? We vote here and then at the next meeting to a second reading?
At a subsequent meeting, yes.
Yes, okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 2.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Agenda 2.2.
Approve the City of Clearwater annual operating budget for the 2025-26 fiscal year and pass ordinance 9849-25 on first reading.
This is for the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the operating budget for fiscal year 25-26. Attached in your agenda item is a worksheet outlining all the changes made from the preliminary to the final that are included. All of those totals are included in the ordinance as you're adopting.
If anyone here from the public desires to speak to agenda 2.2?
Good evening. My name is Marley Lux. I am the president-elect of the General Federation of Women's Clubs North Pinellas Women's Club. We are the proud recipient of a grant from the city last year in recognition of our efforts to support the strategic plan of the priority for community well-being. In 2024 alone, our members contributed more than 22,000 volunteer hours in the community. Among our many initiatives, we replenish all the Little Free libraries in the city, and we provide ongoing support to our nonprofit partners, including the Community Dental Clinic, the Clearwater Free Clinic, Chi Chi Rodriguez Academy, Lots of Blessings, Peace Cafe, Habitat for Humanity, and the Clearwater Historical Society Museum. Looking forward, we are proud to host our 49th Annual Christmas Under the Oaks Holiday Market coming up on November 9 at the St. Pete College Drew Street Campus. This is a signature community event, bringing together thousands of residents and visitors for one day of shopping, entertainment, and holiday spirit. We are seeking the city's continued financial support through a grant like before, or perhaps sponsorship of our Christmas under the oaks market. Thank you for your past support and for considering this request.
Normally, I make an announcement of filling out a comment card. I didn't tonight, but if you would, just complete a comment card for us.
She did.
Did you? Okay, good. Thank you. Next, anyone else like to speak to this agenda? Yeah, to the public.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. So, good evening, council members. Jason Master Pietro, 1079 Cephus Road. I'm with the president of the Friends of Moccasins Lake Nature Park. And I'm here to speak on the budget, specifically the item that was brought to my attention that there was discussion of combining the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Library Advisory Board, and the Environmental Advisory Board. From our standpoint, those three groups appear to be very dissimilar. They're focused in different areas. I know there is some overlap between some of the things they do, but they're similar. And the actions and the things that they specifically work on and the groups that they interact with are quite a bit different as well. I know for a nature park, we do some environmental stuff. We're primarily focused on the park itself and those activities. We have a very good working relationship with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Department for Parks and Rec as well in the city. And we've been able to communicate about different things that were happening in the park, and maybe some cleanup that had needed to happen after the storms and things that had actually gotten done, working in collaboration with Parks and Rec and the advisory board. So from our standpoint, I'm against any of that combining either for this budget or subsequent budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else here from the public desires to speak to this agenda? Hearing saying none, can we have another reading, please?
This is ordinance number 9849-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026. Authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions that are necessary to achieve and accomplish the service program so authorized. Authorizing the city manager to transfer monies and programs among the departments and activities within any fund as provided by Chapter 2 of the Clearwater Code of Ordinances, providing an effective date.
Is there any council discussion on this agenda? Start, Councilmember Hallbridge.
Yeah, I have a comment. I just wanted to thank staff for really going over this budget this year and participating all different departments on cutting back. And I mean, as you could see, what you presented before, you know, it all came, I think everybody tightened their belt and tried to come up with a lot less spent for the budget next year. So thank you to staff and city manager for making that happen.
Councilmember Cotton?
Yeah, mine is a comment as well, since I still have all of our directors here, city staff. And, you know, Clearwater is growing, and with growth comes responsibility, not just to spend, but to steward that money. We owe our citizens, a government that lives within its means, prioritizes essentials, and never loses sight of who it's serving. I want to commend all of our city staff for this budget. The diligence and discipline in showing you all managing your resources has been extremely impressive, so thank you all for that. But as always, our role is to keep asking those hard questions, to safeguard confidence of our residents that we serve. This budget does good things, but good is never good enough when we deal with the people's money. So let's continue to be lean, bold where we must be bold, and always faithful to the community in which we represent. As we move into next year, let's continue to reassess our budgets, ensure we are streamlining and being as efficient as possible. And thank you all again, because I know that what we asked everybody to do in every department was stressful, and it's tedious and time-consuming, but it's worth it. And I can tell you as a resident, I'm thankful for the hard work in decreasing the budget and doing what you can, and I know that every one of our residents is extremely thankful too. So please just keep doing an awesome job for us, and let's always look to be efficient and effective. So thank you all so much.
Councilmember Manino?
Thank you, Mayor. Well said, echo very same sentiments, but do want to thank the team for the hard work. I know it was uncomfortable, and I think getting through discomfort in the decision-making process is often what pushes an organization, a city, a group forward. And I think we are a stronger city because of those exercises. In a political environment where cities and municipalities across the country are getting criticized for ballooning spending and out of control spending, they can't say that about Clearwater. And it was said, tighten the belt, and a lot of other metaphors are said, but it's responsibility and fiscal responsibility of the taxpayers of Clearwater. We went through those exercises and didn't just treat them as exercises. You took action, emboldened action in reducing 10% on a budget is impressive when so many others were hearing some that are over 40 and 50% increased, which is unheard of. But not here. We're proud of this team, proud of our group. We're going to continue to move forward. I do want to say on the compassionate side, as we said before, of letting go of 12 full-time employees is not easy on council, on leadership, or staff. So I commend you on the strength and the process of getting through that. We feel this empathy, but we appreciate the willingness to make those hard decisions to make Clearwater a brighter and more beautiful place to live and call home. So thank you.
Nice, Mayor.
I think everyone up here has expressed their gratitude, and so I was going to be silent, but it might be perceived that I'm not as appreciative. So I want to echo everything that you say, and thank you again for all your hard work, everyone that was involved in this.
Well, I just want to say a couple things. I appreciate the first of the council weighing in, but, you know, it was about a little under 11 months ago, we sat here and really didn't know what the way forward was. We didn't know what it was going to cost us to recover as a city. And that was from the first hurricane, and that was the lean. So this was, you know, always a challenge for a city our size to put together a budget, but I appreciate the staff really helping us figure it all out, because in the past 11 months, there has been a lot of unknowns. What our revenues would be, what our property values would look like, and a lot of uncertainty. And so we, the staff, committed to help us figure out where can we find efficiencies to make sure that we are protecting our citizens from a millage increase in case, you know, our revenues weren't going to come in as projected from property values. So that was a great exercise, it was a very hard exercise, and I appreciate the staff doing that. I don't think we're done. I think, you know, we continue. I know city manager, assistant city manager Slaughter and I attended a program where we're going to come out of that and look for some innovation. The staff's going to work with us to find more innovation efficiencies going forward. But I so appreciate the staff leaning in. It was a very hard time for our community to pull together and recover, and you're leaning in to our budget and helping us find savings to get through a very difficult year. Perhaps one of the most difficult years in the history of the city is very much appreciated. And I also want to say that, you know, we've had a couple of folks from the community groups come up tonight to talk about, you know, we would not be where we're at today as a city if it hadn't been for our community pulling together. And our staff did an amazing job, but our citizens were rock stars too. The way neighbors helped neighbors and everyone pulled together. And the one thing I learned from that, and I think we all did, was the power we have as a community to lean in and help each other out is significant. And we can accomplish tremendous things in the future as a community going forward. But it doesn't mean that we always have to fund those community efforts out of taxpayer money. And I appreciate community organizations, there are a number of community organizations that are not here tonight talking about cuts that maybe affect them in this budget, but there are a number that have talked to me, and they recognize that we are coming out of a difficult year, and we are trying to keep our taxes low for our most vulnerable citizens. So I've encouraged them, I encourage all community groups, that maybe there was a grant available in the past from the city, at least in this year, that you work with us to work with other community partners. We have one of the most generous communities, not just in the state of Florida, but in the country. And there's community support for a place, whatever difference there may be in funding that you're getting from the city this year. It's our community pulling together, and all the efforts, I've heard some tonight, I've heard other efforts, and I know there are great efforts from community groups all over the city that have contributed in the past to the success of the city and have been part of the budget in some way. But if your grant or whatever's being reduced, I really encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. We want to celebrate you. We want to put you together with community partners, private partners, private sector partners, who can help you get through, because there are a lot who are making some sacrifices and figuring out a different way to help our community succeed and come out of a very difficult year. So I just want to acknowledge that, and I appreciate what you all do. You have a great organization. You know, the Christmas under the trees, Under the Oaks is a great event, and you raise a lot of money and do a lot of great work, not just with the funds you contribute, but the volunteer hours that your group contributes. And Friends of Moccasins Lake, it's a jewel out there. We want to work together as a community... We want to work together as a community to bring in private partners to make that even a bigger success than it already is. So there are just so many ways we can do things and get things done as a community outside having to lean on local government and our citizens to do it, and so I appreciate you working with us to get through this budget year. So with that, uh, is there any further discussion by the council? If not, then, um, we'll need a motion.
Move to approve Agenda item two point two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. That will move to item two point three.
Approve the fiscal year twenty, two point three?
Uh, yes, two point three.
Approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six annual capital improvement budget. Establish a six-year plan for the capital improvement budget program, excuse me, and pass ordinance ninety-eight fifty dash twenty-five on first reading.
This is for the first, uh, reading of the ordinance to adopt the capital improvement budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The agenda item outlines the changes that were made, um, from the preliminary budget to what you see in these ordinance, the ordinance that you're adopting tonight, or you're approving, actually. You adopt it next week, two weeks.
So you want to hear from the public desire to speak to Agenda item two point three? Hearing seeing none, maybe we have another reading.
Mayor, this is ordinance number ninety-eight fifty dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, adopting the capital improvement program, uh, budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, approving the six-year capital improvement program, which shall be reevaluated at the beginning of each fiscal year, authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions that are necessary to achieve and accomplish the capital improvements so authorized, authorizing the city manager to transfer money between projects in the capital improvement program, appropriating available and anticipated resources for the projects identified, providing an effective date.
Does anyone want to hear from the public tonight that desires to speak to Agenda item two point three? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Councilmember Halliburton?
Just a brief comment. You know, I've been up here for almost seven years, and capital improvements, we talk a lot about, we talked way back ten years ago about things that are happening today. It just doesn't happen overnight, but I, I am really happy with our capital improvements. We're finally getting around to fixing our marina on the beach, which, uh, actually should have been done years ago. We got a new city hall being built. I mean, that was, I, I, that was something that was kind of on my priority list four or five years ago, it's finally happening. So I'm really happy with everything that we're doing now, because we're really moving forward on projects we've talked about a long time. I just wanted to say that out loud, so everybody knows that it's something we, we just didn't, you know, a lot of this stuff in Clearwater, I always say, we love to talk about things and never move. We have moved. This council has moved things forward, and I'm very happy with it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda item two point three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item two point one.
Approve the recommended penny for Pinellas project list as revised for fiscal years twenty twenty-five, twenty-six through twenty twenty-nine, thirty.
This is the annual public hearing to approve the penny for Pinellas project list for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six through twenty-nine, thirty. City ordinance requires us to hold a public hearing prior to the annual adoption of the capital improvement budget to discuss the use of penny for Pinellas tax, and also at any time in which there is a proposed change to the penny for Pinellas project funding of five hundred thousand dollars or more. Attached to this agenda item is an updated project list. The fire engines, um, and ladder truck replacement project was increased by a total of four hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars and advanced one fiscal year. This represents cost increases for the purchase of an aerial tiller truck budgeted at one million eight hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars, now planned for replacement in fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Um, this funding is split, uh, in two fiscal years over twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-eight, twenty-nine. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the penny project list.
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to this Agenda? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? No discussion, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda item two point four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Move to item three, city manager, please.
I just wanted to echo the thank you, because we do have the whole team here in terms of what they did for the budget work, um, and also just for the record, um, to show, uh, just how incredible this team is, what we were able to accomplish on this budget, and that was after spending eighty-five million dollars in recovery efforts from those storms. Um, and so really good job from our team, really good job to years of conservative spending, um, and allocation with our, um, our finance department, and obviously to our council and previous councils as well. And then I just want to, um, note, um, you can see all of the really exciting work that we're doing and the work that we have planned ahead on our dashboards, another shameless plug, um, but our work plan is available on, um, the dashboard, and also there's a new interactive budget portal that's on our, um, on the website, and so please, you know, I want the public to just know all the information that's available. We do still have one more, the second hearing on the budget, and so there's a lot of information there, and as always, we're happy to any, answer any questions in between now and then as well. That's it, thank you.
Uh, move to item four, city attorney.
Nothing at this time.
Move to item five, closing comments by council members, Councilmember Cotton?
Yeah, I, I could have saved my comments for the end, but I, I didn't expect everybody to sit around, so, thank you all again, genuinely, like, that's why I said it where I did, um, but I, I appreciate every one of you so much, like, you guys are doing a fantastic job, and I look forward to the next, uh, two years to hopefully getting some more great work done with you all, so thank you again.
Councilmember Manino?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Halliburton?
Yeah, just a comment, we're talking about capital improvements, uh, projects, uh, we did a ribbon cutting on Fire Station Forty-seven a couple of days ago, and, uh, it's now operational, and, you know, that was something that took a few years to, you know, conceptually bring it from paper to actual reality. It's located across from Clearwater High School on Hercules, so if anybody listening wants to go by and take a look at it, it's our, one of our brand-new fire stations, and it'll, it'll be, benefit everybody in Clearwater, even tourists and, and people, because it sho, you know, we have a great, um, bunch of fire stations that interweave with each other to protect everybody in Clearwater. That's it.
Thank you. Nice, Mayor.
I'll reserve it for tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, move to item six, closing comments by mayor, and, uh, I appreciate the entire staff sitting, waiting through this budget meeting. Appreciate you coming out on Wednesday night to, uh, join us for this important meeting. Thank you for all the work you've done this past year. You really done, have done, you do have great service to the citizens of Clearwater every day, but particularly with your work towards helping us put this budget together, you've done great service to our citizens, so thank you for that. With that, we will adjourn the September three special budget meeting of the Clearwater